Vice President Troy Hills, regular meeting, council meeting, April 16, 2013.
At a good notice, at a good notice that this meeting has been provided in accordance with the requirements of the open public meeting law by filing the notice of the office of the township clerk and by posting the meeting notice on the bulletin board at the municipal building on December 10, 2012, where it has remained posted since that date. Illegal notice appear in both the Delhi Record from December 14, 2012, and the Star Ledger on December 13, 2012. And it was forwarded by fax to other local newspaper and local radio station on December 10, 2012. In addition, at a good notice that the location change of this meeting has been provided in accordance with the requirements of the open public meeting law by filing the notice in the office of the township clerk and by posting the notice on the bulletin board at the municipal building on March 12, 2013, where it has remained continuously posted. Illegal notice appear in the Delhi Record on March 13, 2013, with the location changes for the specified meeting dates. Note, new day and new time. Council meeting or videotape in air on Cablevision Public Access 21, Channel 21, at 12:00 PM on Sundays, and are also available for viewing at www.parcipani.net.
Roll call.
Mr. Carrifi.
Here.
Mrs. DePiero.
Here.
Mr. Ferrara.
Here.
Mr. Nelson.
Here.
Council President Stanton.
Here. Also present Mayor Barberio, Jasmine Lynn, Business Administrator, Paul Cazarelli, Assistant Business Administrator, John Angusino, Esquire Township Attorney, Yance Wazirmas, Township Clerk. Please rise for a flag. Mr. Nelson, if you would.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Will you please remain standing as we take a moment of silence for the victims and those affected by the Boston Marathon incident yesterday? Upcoming events, May 7, 2013, 7:30 PM, agenda meeting at the Parcipani High School, public invited, public participation. May 14, 2013, 7:30 PM, regular meeting at the Parcipani High School, public invited, public participation. Okay, presentations, presentation certificates by Senator Joe Panaccio from the New Jersey State Senate to the Mid-Atlantic champs for playing in the Little League World Series.
Thank you, councilmen, and on behalf of myself and Assemblywoman Gay Weber and Assemblywoman Alex, Alex, Betty Lou DeCros, I want to thank you for giving me this opportunity to share this happy moment with everybody in this room. Speaking of happy, aside from the, the personal incidences that I've had with my, my family, nothing in my life has given me greater joy or made me any happier ever than playing Little League baseball. That was what the world revolved with me when I was a kid, and unfortunately I didn't play enough of it. But I do remember one day, I got up, of course I got up four or five earlier, four or five hours early than when I should have gotten up. I was all dressed, ready to go, and looking outside the window, it is pouring cats and dogs. Now, any sane, normal human being, any adult with reason would say, this game's going to be rained out. But I wasn't an adult, I'd never had reason, and besides, it was baseball. So I think after about a half a dozen Hail Marys, we got to the field, it was still wet, but the clouds opened up and we got to play that game. Now, it's funny because I remember something that happened like that 50 years ago. I don't remember what I had for breakfast, but that's the type of impact that baseball's had on me and the type of impact and memories that these kids are going to take with them for the rest of their lives. And I understand you're, well, you were 12 years old, 11, 12 years old, so while you're still, it's still kind of cool, you should thank your coaches, give them a hug, and certainly go home, give your parents a hug and a big kiss, and just thank them for those memories because I promise you, what you did last year will stay with you for the rest of your lives. So, having said that, I'm not going to read the proclamation, but we do have a fancy proclamation from the state on behalf of myself and my assembly colleagues. And I'd like to call out your names, and as we call out your name, come and get it. Emil, somebody can get it for him, if you want. Okay, we'll get it, we'll get it to Alex. Emil Mate. Manager Mike Magirio. Coach Ed Phillips. And Coach Roman Mate. Thank you, guys, you all deserve a good round of applause. Congratulations, congratulations.
Can't they all come up in one picture?
They can do whatever they want, they're 12 years old.
And Daniel Rigerio, we save the best for last, come on up.
Come on, guys.
Okay, we have our presentation, special recognition award by Senator Joe Panaccio to Councilmember Mike J. DePiero for being selected Rotary Citizen of the Year.
Tonight's a fun night for me. Not only did we have the kids, now we have my good friend, Michael, who in a very small way, we're going to recognize, again, on behalf of myself and Assemblywoman Betty Lou DeCros and Assemblywoman Gay Weber, it's our pleasure to give Michael this very small recognition on the recognition that he got as outstanding citizen of the, of the year. When we get together in my office, Amy usually goes over what we have to do, and this morning she was saying, all right, you know, you're giving out the awards. Yeah, 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 I know, I know. Well, you know, you're giving this one to Mike. Mike really deserves it, and she rattled out a whole, you made a friend, by the way, she rattled out a whole bunch of things that Councilman DePiero has done for Parcipani, and I, I knew them, but I just kept quiet because I sort of liked hearing what she had to say. And the last person you'd ever hear those accomplishments coming out of would be Mike's mouth. After a while, the type of person that Mike is, he's done so many things for such a long time, he's forgotten all the good things that he's done. But it's nice, it's nice to hear them, Mike, and it's nice to be recognized, if nothing else, as an example. Now, we hold Councilman DePiero as an example for everybody to see for all the good work that he's done, and it ain't over yet. Congratulations, Mike.
Thank you, Senator. People, when they see the, the list of things that was printed in the Rotary Award Dinner, they say, where did you find the time to do all those things over all these years? And the only answer I could give is, I have a supportive and forgiving wife who allows me to do all those things. And so, Dee, you sharing this, and, and, come on up, Dee. You know, if you don't have a happy wife, you don't have a happy life, you know, and she's... I've been married 52 years, and I learned that a long time ago. But she's always supported all the things that I've done. Thank you, Dee. You got the microphone away, try doing, do it off the mic.
All right, we now have our Craftsman Farms, will make their annual presentation to the Township Council.
Modern technology, isn't it wonderful? And what a great night for celebration. The kids left, but it's interesting, this Little League thing, you're mentioning Senator Panaccio, because Little League baseball does play a major role in a lot of our lives. We're getting there, right, with the screen? Okay. We do have a lot to be proud of in this town. My name is Davy Willens, and I'm a trustee with the Craftsman Farms Foundation, and I'm here to share with you in this audience, one of the greatest prides in this township, and one of the things I'm very proud to be part of. And particularly in this world, yeah, we have this slide up here? I'm technologically challenged, I have my grandkids come over to do our remote control, so if you'll advance these, that'd be good. But for those of you might recognize this picture, in this crazy world we're living in, a lot of people come to this site called Craftsman Farms for peace and tranquility. They find calm and sensibility here. They captured in the grounds and the landscape of this site. And the reason we're so proud to be part of it is because of the partnership that we formed through the years. How do I, you got this? Yeah. Oh, because this isn't reaching over there, so we've got an issue here.
There's a mic right here.
Okay. That's a microphone?
Yep.
Okay. Okay, can you hear me?
Yeah.
All right. Anyway, mayor and councilmen, really do appreciate this opportunity to present our report. It's part of our annual agreement and the partnership that we have. And the partnership is interesting because you, sitting in the audience, and the taxpayers, own this site called Craftsman Farms. We, the foundation, manage it on your behalf and on behalf of the township. As a resident, I got to tell you how proud I am from the standpoint that the service that this site has provided over the past 22 years of this partnership. And I can also tell you, as an old man living on a fixed income, I'm very, very concerned about return on investment. And so, when we look at where we're putting our money, all right, I can assure you that being part of this organization, we can be very, very proud of the way that this organization has been stewards of the township money, your taxpayers' money. But I must say, for the most part, we've spent very little of your money because we've been able to raise a lot of it from other sources. So that's the other thing we're very proud of. As we go through tonight... Spacebar, okay. That's a spacebar. Spacebar on my machine. This right here, right? Not advancing.
I think someone else has been passed.
Well, I just...
If something else is passed.
But because I'm one of the older ones here and have the history, I get to present the history of this partnership, all right? And just so we're clear, 26 acres were purchased, the first purchase that was from the Historic Preservation Fund that was formed by the township, in what year, Michael DePiero?
1987.
1987 was formed, okay. The fund was built, the first purchase the township made was the 26-acre tract at Craftsman Farms. Shortly thereafter, the Craftsman Farms Foundation was formed and came together in a partnership with the township. And the thing that's been really amazing about this partnership is people around the country have come to study that partnership as a model of how governmental agencies and private enterprise can work together to save a historic site and to preserve things, and also to save a lot of money and resources. The site was not in real great shape when we were there, and we're proud of the transformations that have been made. The log house was basically transformed from an abandoned, rundown, very illutilized log cabin to a National Historic Landmark House Museum. What is so important about that? It is the only national historic landmark in this township. We have a lot of historic sites, but a national historic landmark through the foundation activity, and that's a very significant thing for us to understand. The other thing, the grounds, frankly, I lived in that neighborhood, the grounds at one time were fairly significant eyesore for a lot of people in this town as they drove by. Right now, it's been transformed to a beautiful park. Working with Parks and Recs folks, we have, as you can see here, a little picnic table. People come from all over and enjoy picnic lunches on the site, so it's been transformed into a wonderful park. Now, the partnership was strengthened in early 2007 when we negotiated at that time a 25-year partnership agreement with the township and operating agreement. And that emboldened us and gave us a great deal of professional pride, and was able to give us the ability to bring aboard a professional staff to manage this site, because managing historic, national landmark sites are a lot different than running a house museum. You have very stringent guidelines that you have to comply with, and you have to follow them so that you continue to get grant monies. But the thing I think that I'm most proud of is because we have done those things, this organization has raised about three-for-one. Every dollar the township has put into this site, we've been able to increase that by three or fourfold from other granting sources. That's for the buildings the town, we as taxpayers here own, okay? The foundation has raised those funds. We're awfully proud of that point, and we hope you will be too. And as we look at available funding, and you want to look for return on investment, as we look at funds that may be available, if you want to know where to get the bag for the buck, come see us because we can turn it into gold for you. So that's part of what we're going to say. We have a plan that we've developed because we were emboldened, and with this plan has given us a clear picture of where we need to go and how we're going to get there. And we need your help to do that. So we're going to now turn this over to Heather Saverson, our executive director. It's one of those professionals we're talking about that has brought us to this point to review with you where we're at, some recent updates, okay? Through that, I'll bring up Heather.
Whoa, maybe I'm technologically impaired too. Oh, boy. Well, thank you, Davy. Thank you, President Stanton, council, mayor, everybody who's here. We're just delighted to have this opportunity to report on what we've done over the past year, as we do each year. As Davy mentioned, 2007 was a pivotal year for the foundation. It was the year that the township purchased an additional portion of Craftsman Farms so that we now have 30 full acres. And it was also the year that the, the board stepped forward with a very bold plan that Davy mentioned, which was included hiring new staff, including me, which I appreciate. And now we are eight professional museum staff. And I did want to mention that the $35,000 seed money that we got through the township open space, just as Davy mentioned, the way we increased the, the money that we get, we used that $35,000 seed money, we matched it with $50,000 from the county, $85,000 from the state, in order to develop a historic site master plan. That historic site master plan, there's a little photo up there, that's a picture of the bookcase in my office. Every one of those binders is part of that plan. We're not talking about a little something that fits in a file. It is a complete study of each building of the property and our plans for the future. And that has allowed us to develop a strategic plan, and it has allowed us to begin extensive restoration and refurbishing. And also, because of the strategic plan that developed out of that, developed new programming, which is very, very community-based. I did want to share some of the changes since 2007 very quickly, and I've only picked a few highlights. The number of items that have been restored would take us all night, truly. This is the log kitchen on the left-hand side, as it appeared in 2007. On the right, you can see the log kitchen, log house kitchen as it appears today. It's in full use as a, as a gift shop, and also it's where we welcome our visitors. The log house bedroom in 2008 looked like this. It's not, we had it open to the public, but it's not the sort of place where you'd really want your visitors to go to. This is it today, and you will see that it's an entirely different place, something we're very, very proud of. The building next to the log house was known as the annex, this is the way it appeared in 2008. And with funding, we were able to make it look like this on the outside now. It's one of the early buildings you see when you walk on the property. We're very proud of its appearance. This is its interior before. This is it now. This is another example of some of the work that we were able to do, taking funding that the township was able to get through open space funds, and then building upon that. The floor that you see there was an individual donation, the kitchen cabinets that you see in the background were other donations, the lighting was another donation, we got a donation to fully install AV equipment for all the programming, and this room is in constant use. It has become the education center of Craftsman Farms, and it is used by so many groups. I made a very short list of some of them. It's in frequent use for Girl Scouts and Boy Scouts, the annual design invitational takes place there, and that's a program for talented high school students from throughout North Jersey, which will take place again on April 27. It's used for lectures and workshops for the community. Our current artists-in-residence will be speaking there on April 20. It's used for craft classes, volunteer training, docent training. It's used for a scholar's symposium that is partnered with the Sotheby's Institute of Art. It's used as a lunchroom by senior citizens on bus tours. It's used by individuals in the community for small parties. It's used for civic groups. It's used by, was recently used by Drew University for a heritage tourism class. The New Jersey Historic Trust came all the way up to Craftsman Farms to use that room for their annual meeting. The New Jersey Historical Commission has used it for grant training workshops. The Morris County Alliance for Tourism uses it as a meeting room. And Channel 13 has used it for kids programs. And the list does really go on and on, and we don't have all night, but it's wonderful to see that it has become such a resource. Another building on the property is the North Cottage. This is a quick shot of the interior, and this is the interior today. This building was also in very, very steady use. It was recently used by the Dodge Foundation for a poetry workshop. It's currently in use by our artists-in-residence. It's used for Girl Scout programs. You can see it here for a brunch that took place there recently. And all of our programs are designed to serve the community. We work really hard at serving all ages. These are some preschool, we serve schoolchildren, Girl Scouts, as I mentioned before, high school students, colleges. We partnered with a number of universities, we serve universities all over. We've even had a presenter from Northumbria University in England participate in our, in our symposium. And of course, we serve adults, which is the audience that you would assume we have. Families are a big deal to us. We really believe in intergenerational programming. We think that that's the only way that we can truly serve the community so that young people can have the opportunity to ask questions of older people and really get involved in history in the area. And we serve the community. On May 11, we have an upcoming Family Fun and Games, which is, includes a bilingual portion. There are flyers up here, we'd love if you'd take some of them with you. And we also have a number of really special community partnerships. We use the classes from Morris County Vocational School of Technology to work on some of the buildings that don't have quite the high historic preservation standards that the other buildings have. It gives them wonderful training. They come out as a regular part of their classes. They provide wonderful work, painting and repair work, that the township doesn't have to pay for, and we don't have to pay for, and we serve a need, giving them training. We also work with students from that school that have special needs. We work with visually impaired, a hearing impaired, and learning disabled children. And they, they have done things like apply wood preservative to our railings, and they learn a skill, and they get that sense of self-confidence. So it serves many, many needs. And we're also very proud of fully utilizing the grounds. We're not just the log house. The examples that are shown here just include one family program and a lunch that takes place. This particular one was a class that was taking place from Drew University, and it was their lunch break. But you'll see the site in use all the time. We have joggers, we have people using it as photo backdrops for weddings. The biggest news of 2012 was a groundbreaking exhibition. I don't use that term lightly. It was an exhibit that was originated at Craftsman Farms and was picked up by the media. It was on Channel 13, it was featured in the New York Times. It was picked up by the AP, and the news of the exhibit was nationwide, and we're very, very proud of that. Our annual attendance last year topped 13,000. We offered over 90 community-based programs, and I don't think there are other institutions in the town that offer that, that level of community usage. Our goal, of course, is always to protect the township property, and we're currently involved in a major fire suppression plan. We received township open space funds to use as seed money, and we use that to raise additional funds from Morris County to more than double the township's investment and thoroughly protect the township property. This is a major fire suppression project. It's not just putting in sprinklers, we're putting in a water main. We've installed three fire hydrants and fully protecting two of the most important buildings on the property. The project is on budget and on schedule, and we're, we're proud of doing that over and over again. We're also very proud, as Davy mentioned, of raising funding from other sources. Since 2007, the foundation raised $2.5 million to operate the site for the community. That money is used by the foundation to pay the staff for those programs that you saw. It's used for building maintenance, it's used for all of the operations of the site. And we continually find other ways to raise funds to protect the property. One recent example is that the stone piers which you see in this picture are crumbling, they're, they're in really sad shape, they're original to the property, and we got an estimate of $36,000 to repair them. So we launched a fundraising campaign, which if you see our newsletter, is on the cover of the newsletter. We launched the campaign quietly in February and publicly this month. We've already raised $19,000 towards that, and we know we'll complete the project. So at this time, I would like to introduce Barbara Weisskettle, who is our board president, and she will be telling you about some of our plans for the future.
Thank you, Heather.
Thank you, everyone.
But you'll see the site in use all the time. We have joggers, we have people using it as photo backdrops for weddings. The biggest news of 2012 was a groundbreaking exhibition. I don't use that term lightly. It was an exhibit that was originated at Craftsman Farms and was picked up by the media. It was on Channel 13. It was featured in the New York Times. It was picked up by the AP, and the news of the exhibit was nationwide, and we're very, very proud of that. Our annual attendance last year topped 13,000. We offered over ninety community-based programs, and I don't think there are other institutions in the town that offer that level of community usage. Our goal, of course, is always to protect the township property, and we're currently involved in a major fire suppression plan. We received township open space funds to use as seed money, and we use that to raise additional funds from Morris County to more than double the township's investment and thoroughly protect the township property. This is a major fire suppression project. It's not just putting in sprinklers. We're putting in a water main. We've installed three fire hydrants and fully protecting two of the most important buildings on the property. The project is on budget and on schedule, and we're proud of doing that over and over again. We're also very proud, as Davy mentioned, of raising funding from other sources. Since 2007, the foundation raised $2.5 million to operate the site for the community. That money is used by the foundation to pay the staff for those programs that you saw. It's used for building maintenance. It's used for all of the operations of the site. And we continually find other ways to raise funds to protect the property. One recent example is that the stone piers which you see in this picture are crumbling. They're in really sad shape. They're original to the property, and we got an estimate of $36,000 to repair them. So, we launched a fundraising campaign, which if you see our newsletter, is on the cover of the newsletter. We launched the campaign quietly in February and publicly this month. We've already raised $19,000 towards that, and we know we'll complete the project. So, at this time, I would like to introduce Barbara Weisskettle, who is our board president, and she will be telling you about some of our plans for the future.
Thank you, Heather. Thank you, everyone. I am very proud to be part of this organization and a part of this community, and it's my opportunity to talk about where we're going next. In 2007, we talked about a pivotal year. We talked about the strategic mission and plan. We've achieved that for the first level. It's time to move to the next level, our next strategic plan to become a self-sustaining, unique cultural experience to serve this broad community. But we have to protect what we have. So, we have some things we need to do. Twenty years ago, we heard we started the restoration process. We have yet to do major maintenance on the log house, our major portion of the museum. Like any home, it needs update on an ongoing basis, so we need to make sure that we're doing that. Needs some painting, log preservation critical to a log house. We found a few leaks, as these last storms have proven. We want to make sure we don't have this problem in the future, so we're looking for the township to help support that with a $70,000 proposal. We also have some basic needs of lighting and security for our evening programs to make it even more usable and safer for our guests and visitors. Simple things like that. And then the next step with our North and South Cottage, you saw the picture of the renovation of the North Cottage a moment ago. We want to make sure that we're actually protecting that and doing the best possible. We need to start that process with the windows and make them a safe place for that cottage. So, again, looking at the township for a $50,000 support in that regard. I'm the money person. Did you get that picture already? But we have a vision for the future. We have the next level I've talked about, and importantly, that includes utilizing all of the assets of the site. It's not just the log house. We want to make sure we're utilizing all the buildings on property. We have an opportunity to grow to the next level, become self-sustaining, but we need to start with changing exhibition space, and there's a way to do that. We've already identified that we can take, and I'm going to share that with you in just a moment, and take some of the buildings and adapt them and move them to that next level. And that would help serve not only the community in a broader sense, retaining visitorship, increasing visitorship, but also to move us through, as I said, to become the scholarly site that we envisioned in the future. So, this is our current administration building. We'd like to make this the exhibition space. It makes the most sense. It gives us the opportunity to bring in those changing exhibitions, bring back visitors on an ongoing basis, and hold additional public programs. In order to do that, we have to find a place for the staff. We talked about our eight staff and hopefully growing in the future to support all these big programs. So, we've identified the White Cottage, a currently not in use building. It is not in good repair. It needs to be reused, restored to the right purposes, and we can do that. We've already identified what kind of funding to a small level we need to start with. And that, again, building toward this future, building the exhibition space, moving the staff from the administration building to the White Cottage, and then transitioning the administration building to that exhibit space will bring us to that next level, again, encouraging self-sustainability, encouraging the ability to bring in new visitorship, and supporting the broad community. So, in order to do that, we've identified a fund number to start with. This is not the total number. We believe that this number, to repurpose these two buildings, will probably reach closer to a million dollars. But we are committed to actually going forward and raising the additional funds from the community, I mean, sorry, from the broad audiences that support Craftsman Farms. In order to do that, the return on investment, just as we've proved in the past, we will look to bring in as well. So, this is what we're looking here for the future, a total of around $550,000 from the township to support us in the basic needs of maintenance and basic site security and additional safety, but also to seed us to start, to get these new processes going, to move us to that next level, to make this a better experience for all of our visitors, encourage the visitation of the site by all the township and external visitors to the whole of Parsippany, and become that educational, unique educational resource that our vision says we're moving forward in. So, more than just a house museum, we're committed to being a true resource for our community. And again, returning back to our message of pride in Parsippany, pride in the partnership, and we thank you for the continued support you've shown us, and we will continue to support the community. Thank you very much.[882.20][882.20](APPLAUSE).
Back in 1986, when we tried to save Craftsman Farms from the bulldozers, we had to try to figure out how to do that and how we would raise the funding to do that. And we did that in 1987. At that point in time, I had no idea how the township was going to operate at Craftsman Farms and how we were going to restore all of those buildings that you saw just now on the slides. I had no idea how we were going to do that. Well, the best thing we ever did, besides saving Craftsman Farms, was to form this foundation. They are absolutely impressive. Now, I'm what, what's my title, ex officio trustee or something like that?
Liaison.
Liaison, okay. And I attend their meetings. And you know that old rule that 10% of the people in any organization do 90% of the work? Not true here. 100% of the people do 100% of the work with these trustees. Every committee report is comprehensive, concise, on time, accurate, very, very impressive group of volunteers we have. Combine that with the docents and the volunteers that support Craftsman Farms, we are really, really fortunate in Parsippany.[967.31][967.31](APPLAUSE).
Council President said, if there's any questions from the audience or from any of the council members, we'd be happy to try and entertain the response to that appropriately.
I have a question. We're going to raise this thing?
Yes.
David. With the new exhibition space, how many square feet are you hoping to be able to create with, from the administration building? And then the follow-up was like, how many people do you think you would be able to serve with that?
The capacity of the building, can you hear me okay? Yeah. The capacity of the building, as far as fire code, is, it can't exceed 50 at any given time. We anticipate that people would probably be able to see an exhibit in between an hour and an hour and a half or so, so we would probably serve quite a few people. One of the major issues that we have is the number of people who come and they'll see the log house, and they think it's great, but they don't really get inspired to come back. When we ran this last exhibit, we saw a tremendous number of them come back, and that really inspired us to want to have people come back over and over.
Okay.
Davy? Just one point. I don't know if it's the word or not. Out of all those visitors that visit Craftsman Farms, okay? Just list the states that have the most visitors, kind of, not accurate numbers, just.
Last year, we had 28 states, 14 countries represented in visitation. And one of the largest state visitations was in California, okay? Believe it or not, and New York State. So, people do travel long distances to make this Mecca. And as we do know, a lot of the funding in the Historic Preservation Fund is generated by the hotel tax occupancy, right? Equity tax, and funded there. And of course, a lot of these folks stay in our local hotels when they come visit Craftsman Farms. So, it's kind of like a self-sustaining thing, another return on investment. And back to the exhibition space, the thing we've learned, folks, is we have so many treasures in this town, and we have so many opportunities for having exhibitions from a historic perspective. And a number of the folks from the Historic Society and Interest are here tonight also. But the point being, by having a space in this town to have those exhibitions, we can continue to really offer a great service to the community with a broader good. And that's the idea here, to take that next step, because the log house really limits us, because it's a national historic landmark, and it's very difficult to have exhibitions in there unless they're properly staffed or whatever. So, we really love its ability to do that. So, thank you for your.
Thank you. Thank you. Thanks.
Okay, appreciate it.
No, I know. Thank you.
Okay, bids to be taken. April 24, 2013, 11:00 AM, Route 46, Wooder Main Replacement, Hill Road to Cherry Hill Road, rebid. April 25, 2013, 11:00 AM, Road Reconstruction Project from Mount Tabor, Summerfield Avenue, Heading Place, West Morris Avenue, Banghart Place, Embry Place, Asbury Place, Wesley Place. May 2, 2013, 11:00 AM, St. John's Avenue Reconstruction Project, Section 2. At this time, I'll entertain a motion to open this up to the public.
I'll make a motion.
Motion by Mr. Farrar.
Second.
Second by Mr. Carify. Roll call.
Mr. Carify?
Yes.
Mr. DePiero?
Yes.
Mr. Farrar?
Yes.
Mr. Nelson?
Yes.
Mr. Stanton?
Yes. Okay, if you come up, you'll be given five minutes to speak. Please sign in when you come up.
Roy Mesmer, Tundrumland Drive. The mayor's gone? Was he not in the bathroom, or he's gone? On April 10, 2013, at 10:00 AM, I was in the Town Hall picking up Parsippany Life's weekly newspaper. Coming down the hallway, I noticed two Somerset County Prosecutor detectives. They entered the Township Clerk's Office and within seconds left her office, opening up a small manila envelope, looking in and shaking their heads in acknowledgment of the requested material. I was only feet away from them. My simple question is, what is going on? If this is related to the January Sunday night meeting, then Mr. Inglesino should be removed from all phases of that matter, including giving advice and any kind of administration, giving advice of any kind to the administration or council members. Mr. DePiero, as senior sitting councilman, who I truly respect, I think that was indicated tonight with the award you received, you should be making a motion to bring in an independent attorney to advise council. Your names, your reputations are on the line. Next, Mr. Nelson. Your patch and daily record editorial regarding the despicable occurrence of last Tuesday night, April 9, at the council meeting, was on the money and very well-written. I received over two dozen phone calls and acknowledgment tonight from people. Mr. Inglesino, you should be aware that 6,540 men and women have given their lives in Iraq and Afghanistan, along with 49,763 injured. I received those figures yesterday from Congressman Freeland Heisen's office. This young man, 22-year-old soldier, died last week. His family lives in this town. So, that American citizens like Pat Patacci can express their concerns and ask questions to their governing bodies. How dare you treat Pat Patacci that way, that you did last Tuesday night? How dare you, Mayor, who's not present right now, but I wrote this speak, allow someone who works for the township to conduct themselves that way? She questioned, she, Pat Patacci has questioned on numerous occasions this administration and the two previous administrations. We have Mayor Letts here tonight to contest to that. It was not political last week. Mayor Babayor, you should ask Mr. Inglesino if his resignation effective immediately. God bless America.
Mr. Mesmer, if I may just respond to the part you addressed my name. I'm sure you recall when Mayor Pryory was under investigation. The feds were in Parsippany for over two years, duplicating papers and scrutinizing every single record in Town Hall. At no time during those two years did they ever indicate what it was they were investigating. So, at this point in time, those prosecutors picked up some CDs, I guess, or DVDs from the township. You can jump to a conclusion, but right now legally, we do not know what it is they're looking for. And so, it's inappropriate to try to anticipate what it is they're going to do and what it is they're looking for. So, I would say wait until we have a reaction from them before we jump to conclusions.
Hi, Julia Peterson, 25-year-old Parsippany Road. Speaking totally as a private citizen. Want to reassure you, reassure everybody, I'm speaking for myself only. First, I want to say that I commend the council for supporting the state resolution to refund open space and farmland preservation. It's very important to us and to the whole state, and I was a little, I'm pleased that you voted to support that. Secondly, I want to invite all of you, some people know that we annually have an event at our house, which is on the National Register, the Livingston Benedict House, and I have a press release about that, that I made a copy for each one of you, but we'd love to see you. It's the weekend of May 4th and 5th. We have 30 volunteers who show up. They portray people from Parsippany's past. We have crafts for kids, no charge. We just do it, and our volunteers love it. Something about wearing a costume that makes it fun, I think. I don't know. I also want to say that as a friend and fellow citizen of Pat Patacci, I mean, we're all familiar with how often she comes to council meetings. I worked with her a lot on the open space thing last year. I think she has a right to speak, because she knows a lot about this town. She studies the issues. She's informed. And I was a little upset to hear that this, I know how hard it is to sit there and listen to all of us, but we really do hope that you listen to us and take us seriously, and we do hope that you represent us. I also, the only question that I have is, I was concerned about how many acres were being ceded to the town in the Forge Pond Development. Is that a public knowledge or not? How many acres of the Forge Pond is going to be public property?
I believe the answer is three.
From 131 acres?
Well, maybe that's what it started at. I don't recall off the top of my head how many there are now, but three acres will remain public property.
Okay. It's funny, because it's an issue that, again, as a private citizen, I really can't talk about what I've done other places, but many of us worked rather tireless for many years to hope that that would be. It is one of the few untouched areas in the town. Hasn't been touched since the Revolutionary War, and it's a little bit of a disappointment to hear that it kind of just got blown off like that. Thanks very much. Can I bring these up to you? And there are 11 of them, so.
Yes.
Julie, what's the theme this year at your house?
It's called "When Washington Burned What Was Happening in Parsippany." It's about the years 1800 to 1820. So, many interesting things happened. We found out some things about it, and some are going to portray that. And the crafts are pretty much colonial crafts, so.
Mary Przycki, 273 Marcela Road. I guess when Washington was burning, Parsippany was developing. That's a pretty shocking thing I just heard about, only three acres of Forge Pond will be preserved. It's another example of developers eventually getting what they want. That pond was beautiful. In case any of you didn't know, there were two eagles' parents that used to hunt fish there, because there was an S.
Who, who developed it?
The township planner, Mr. Snikus.
The township planner. To me, did the, the planning board should have seen that, you should have seen that before it was even brought up here. It, it's just something that is that important to this township. And all of this pettiness that's going on and unprofessional behavior that happens at council meetings, I think, has to stop. And when a citizen comes here, they want the answers from the council people, because we elected you, and that's where the frustration comes from. Thank you.
Ms. Persicki, if I might, the, I will, of course, I have always reviewed the ordinances before they come to the council, and as part of the legal process for ordinance zone changes, once the ordinance is introduced by the governing body, then it would be, by operation of law, referred to the planning board. And the planning board would then have 35 days to consider it and make recommendations. So it would go to the planning board, but, you know, after it's introduced by the council, that's the legal process.
That's not before first reading? When, then when would first reading come into effect?
First reading is introduction, so the way the legal process works is, is that once the ordinance is introduced by first reading, then it's referred to the planning board for consideration. The planning board doesn't see it until it's introduced.
Until first reading.
Until after first reading.
After first reading.
Correct.
And then you people have second reading, and bingo, it becomes ordinance.
Well, then there's second reading and public hearing, after planning board input.
All right, so if the planning board obje- changes, the, recommends changes, where does that, where does that come into the show?
The planning board can recommend changes, and the governing body can consider those changes. If those changes are material in nature, then the ordinance would by law have to be reintroduced on first reading all over again. If the changes recommended by the planning board are immaterial and ministerial in nature, then the, the ordinance could proceed towards second reading.
Thank you.
Seeing no one come forward, I'll entertain a motion to close the public.
Motion.
Motion by Mr. Farrar.
Second.
Second by Mr. Nelson. Roll call.
Mr. Creefy?
Yes.
Mr. DePiero?
Yes.
Mr. Farrara?
Yes.
Mr. Nelson?
Yes.
Mr. Stanton?
Yes. Ordinance is for introduction, ordinance 2013, colon 09, Mr. DePiero.
An ordinance of the Township Council of the Township of Parsippany Troy Hills, Morris County, New Jersey, amending Chapters 239 entitled Sewers and 420 entitled Water of the Code of the Township of Parsippany Troy Hills for the purpose of establishing fees and average daily water and sewage flows for the year 2013. It resolves that the above ordinance be introduced, read by title, and passed on first reading at a meeting of the Township Council of the Township of Parsippany Troy Hills, held on April 16, 2013, and that said ordinance be further considered for second reading and final passage at a meeting to be held on May 14, 2013, at 7:30 p.m. prevailing time, or as soon thereafter as the matter may be reached, at the Parsippany High School, 309 Baldwin Road, in said township, at which time all persons interested shall be given an opportunity to be heard concerning said ordinance. It further resolves that the clerk be authorized and directed to advertise said ordinance with the notice of introduction there being published in the official newspaper according to law.
Second.
Motion by Mr. DePiero, second by Mr. Farrar. Roll call.
Mr. Creefy?
Yes.
Mr. DePiero?
Yes.
Mr. Farrara?
Yes.
Mr. Nelson?
Yes.
Mr. Stanton?
Yes. Resolution, 2013-097, Mr. Farrar.
Resolution of the Township Council of the Township of Parsippany Troy Hills, authorizing change orders number three and number four for Sylvan Way South Interceptor Sewer Replacement.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Farrar, second by Mr. DePiero. Roll call.
Mr. Creefy?
Yes.
Mr. DePiero?
Yes.
Mr. Farrara?
Yes.
Mr. Nelson?
Yes.
Mr. Stanton?
Yes. Or 2013-098, Mr. Creefy. Yep, sorry.
A resolution of the Township Council of the Township of Parsippany Troy Hills, authorizing the grant and execution of a sewer utility easement, Block 494, Lot 5, 1160, Knoll Road.
Motion by Mr. Creefy?
Second.
Second by Mr. DePiero. Roll call.
Mr. Creefy?
Yes.
Mr. DePiero?
Yes.
Mr. Farrara?
Yes.
Mr. Nelson?
Yes.
Mr. Stanton?
Yes. Or 2013-099, Mr. Nelson.
R. 2013-99. A resolution authorizing the shared services agreement by and between the Township of Parsippany Troy Hills and the Township of Hanover concerning the performance of animal control services by the Township of Parsippany Troy Hills on behalf of the Township of Hanover.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Nelson, second by Mr. DePiero. Roll call.
Mr. Creefy?
Yes.
Mr. DePiero?
Yes.
Mr. Farrara?
Yes.
Mr. Nelson?
Yes.
Mr. Stanton?
Yes. Ordinance is for introduction, ordinance 2013, colon 09, Mr. DePiero.
An ordinance of the Township Council of the Township of Parsippany Troy Hills, Morris County, New Jersey, amending Chapters 239 entitled Sewers and 420 entitled Water of the Code of the Township of Parsippany Troy Hills for the purpose of establishing fees and average daily water and sewage flows for the year 2013. It resolves that the above ordinance be introduced, read by title, and passed on first reading at a meeting of the Township Council of the Township of Parsippany Troy Hills, held on April 16, 2013, and that said ordinance be further considered for second reading and final passage at a meeting to be held on May 14, 2013, at 7:30 p.m. prevailing time, or as soon thereafter as the matter may be reached, at the Parsippany High School, 309 Baldwin Road, in said township, at which time all persons interested shall be given an opportunity to be heard concerning said ordinance. It further resolves that the clerk be authorized and directed to advertise said ordinance with the notice of introduction there being published in the official newspaper according to law.
Second.
Motion by Mr. DePiero, second by Mr. Farrar. Roll call.
Mr. Creefy?
Yes.
Mr. DePiero?
Yes.
Mr. Farrara?
Yes.
Mr. Nelson?
Yes.
Mr. Stanton?
Yes. Resolution, 2013-097, Mr. Farrar.
Resolution of the Township Council of the Township of Parsippany Troy Hills, authorizing change orders number three and number four for Sylvan Way South Interceptor Sewer Replacement.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Farrar, second by Mr. DePiero. Roll call.
Mr. Creefy?
Yes.
Mr. DePiero?
Yes.
Mr. Farrara?
Yes.
Mr. Nelson?
Yes.
Mr. Stanton?
Yes. Or 2013-098, Mr. Creefy. Yep, sorry.
A resolution of the Township Council of the Township of Parsippany Troy Hills, authorizing the grant and execution of a sewer utility easement, Block 494, Lot 5, 1160, Knoll Road.
Motion by Mr. Creefy?
Second.
Second by Mr. DePiero. Roll call.
Mr. Creefy?
Yes.
Mr. DePiero?
Yes.
Mr. Farrara?
Yes.
Mr. Nelson?
Yes.
Mr. Stanton?
Yes.
R. 2013-99. A resolution authorizing the shared services agreement by and between the Township of Parsippany Troy Hills and the Township of Hanover concerning the performance of animal control services by the Township of Parsippany Troy Hills on behalf of the Township of Hanover.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Nelson, second by Mr. DePiero. Roll call.
Mr. Creefy?
Yes.
Mr. DePiero?
Yes.
Mr. Farrara?
Yes.
Mr. Nelson?
Yes.
Mr. Stanton?
Yes. At this time, I'll entertain a motion to go into closed session.
Mr. Counsel President?
If I may, while the vote was, I guess, being had for the consent agenda, Councilman Farrar had indicated to me that he did not intend to vote on R. 2013-096. Is that correct, Mr. Farrar?
Yes.
Okay, the, the record should just reflect that. He was literally talking to me as the roll was being called, so...
Okay, motion to go into closed session?
And the purpose of the motion to go into closed session would be to discuss anticipated and threatened litigation.
Entertain a motion.
I'll make a motion.
Motion by Mr. Nelson?
Second.
Second by Mr. Farrar. Roll call.
I'm sorry, I missed the motion and second.
Mr. Farrar.
It was, no, it was the motion and second. Thank you. Mr. Creefy?
Yes.
Mr. DePiero?
Yes.
Mr. Farrara?
Yes.
Mr. Nelson?
Yes.
Mr. Stanton?
Yes. Resolution, whereas the Open Public Meeting Act, public law, 1975, Chapter 231, permits the exclusion of public from a meeting in certain circumstances, whereas Township Council in the opinion such circumstances presently exist, whereas the Township Council wishes to discuss litigation, attorney-client privilege, whereas minutes will be kept, once a matter involving confidentiality of the above no longer requires confidentiality, the minutes can be made public. Now therefore, be it resolved by Township Council, Township of Persippany Troy Hills, public be excluded from this meeting.
Second.
Motion by myself, second by Mr. DePiero. Roll call.
Mr. Creefy?
Yes.
Mr. DePiero?
Yes.
Mr. Farrara?
Yes.
Mr. Nelson?
Yes.
Mr. Stanton?
Yes.
Make a motion to reconvene?
Second.
Motion by Mr. DePiero to reconvene, second by Mr. Farrar. Roll call.
Mr. Creefy?[1764.63]